Like to call the virtual full board of Alderman meeting for October 12th, 2021 to order. Please rise for the pledge. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag, United States of America.
America.
To the republic.
Republic for which it stands.
One nation.
God.
Liberty and justice.
All right, Trish, can I get roll call?
Yes, Alderman King.
Here.
Alderman Stowe. Alderman Phipps.
There.
Tar.
Yeah.
Alderman Cassetti.
Yeah.
Alderman Janetti.
Here.
Alderman Spigarello. Alderwoman Strowman.
Here.
Alderman Yowman.
Here.
Alderman Rivers.
Yeah.
Alderman Mamon. President Stewart.
Mamon's here, his audio is off.
I know, I know he's here.
I'm here.
President Stewart.
Present.
Alderman Blackwell. Alderman De Libro. Eleven present.
Trish, Tony's here too. Sorry, I stepped away for a half a second.
Tony De Libro's here.
Mamon, Mamon.
I got you.
Oh, sorry.
Frank is, Frank is here too.
I got Frank, so I have eleven.
Hey, you just have to say here one.
Eleven, three, eleven present, three absent. All right.
Yeah.
Clar form. Okay, consideration of previous minutes, we got the minutes, we got them late tonight. I don't know if anyone got a chance to look at them. If you want to approve them or you want to wait until the next meeting. Those are September 14th, 2021 minutes from the last full meeting.
I had the opportunity, oh, second. There you go. I read them, so I'm okay with them.
You too.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Cassetti, second by Mamon. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstain, I didn't get a chance to read them.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Um, all right, public session. Just a quick reminder, anyone from the public can address the board tonight. Limit your, your responses to three minutes or less. Please identify yourself with your name and address for the public record and please try not to engage in Q and A. We can answer stuff to the best as we can, but we will try to address anything that's, that's, that comes up. So is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the Board of Alderman tonight?
Good evening, can you hear me?
Who that?
This is Stan Kapinos.
Yes, okay. Yes, you're first up, Stan Kapinos.
Okay, there you go. Um, my name is Stan Kapinos, I live at eight Cougar Court in, in Sonia. I sent a letter to, um, to Josh, uh, last, uh, Aldermanic meeting on September 14th with some concerns about, um, fire safety at the 126 Ford Street address. And you indicated to me that the Aldermans have a, um, subcommittee that deal with fire safety and there was an indication to be some inquiry as to what was happening with fire safety at 126 Ford Street. Uh, I was also told at that time, uh, that I should speak with the building department and I did, I spoke with, uh, Mr. Blackwell Senior uh, about the blight issues at 126 Ford. He indicated to me that he would send me an email with the light citations. I have yet to receive that. And, uh, you know, one of the things that I mentioned in my letter to you on the 14th was a need for monitoring of the building. And surprisingly, uh, we had an incident Saturday night, uh, with some thefts and a physical confrontation that could have ended in death, but luckily it didn't. So my concern is heightened about monitoring in the area for things like fire safety and people trespassing on places that they don't belong. That's basically all I have to say. Uh, if you can tell me something about the fire safety, I would appreciate that. If not, we can wait for another time.
Okay. Joe, do you want to, do you want to update from the, um, the meeting? I can't remember if this came up or not in the, the Fire Commission meeting.
Uh, I, I, I think it was mentioned, um, but I don't recall the specifics either, as I sit here right now. I thought, I thought it was, it was brought up and mentioned, um, for the Fire Marshal. And that's, that's my recollection is that they're, and then they were going to look into it.
So, so Mr. Kapinos, I, I will follow up directly with the Fire Marshal because that's who would obviously be.
Right.
Taking care of that. Um, I will check with the city tomorrow on the, um, the blight citations that you requested. That comes, uh, you met, you had, you contacted the right place. I want to make sure that if there was something that you would get.
Yeah, I, I talked with him, we had a nice conversation. I gave him the email. I think he either forgot or got the email wrong or something like that.
And then I talked. And, uh, also.
Light citations. Sorry, Mr. President, we do have blight citations and we can send them to Mr.
Are they posted or is this something that one has to ask for?
So I just got an update from our, uh, building official, Rhonda Perini. Uh, she confirmed that this property has been blighted. I'll get the citations and I'll email them directly to you, sir. What email can I reach out to you at?
S like in Sam, F like in Frank, and then my last name Kapinos. So it would be S F K A P I N O S at Gmail.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, uh.
Finally, Mr. Kapinos, uh, I did speak with, I believe, your neighbor regarding the issue that happened this weekend. Um, and he was going to look into, uh, I guess there's a, a lack of lighting in that area.
Yeah, there's no, uh, street light in the middle of the street. I'm not certain if that would prevent, but it would certainly help to have something more well lit.
We were going to look into seeing if UI would be willing to, um, put something in that spot, especially given that there was a, uh, an incident.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thanks again, and thanks for coming again.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your help.
So, uh, and we'll get back to you on the, the fire one particularly, and we'll get you that documentation.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to address the board tonight?
Um, I would like to speak. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Name and, uh, name and address for the public record, please.
Yes, my name is Stella Jacaruso at 305 Kimberly Lane. Sorry, this is my first Zoom meeting. I luckily was able to get through the pandemic without doing a Zoom meeting at all, so excuse me if I don't really know what I'm doing. Um, I had spoke with you, um, Alderman Stewart and Sheila O'Malley last week um, about our issue with the road. I know it's on the agenda for, um, tonight, which I'm glad for, and I'm sure it's going to be an ongoing issue. There's a lot of, you know, things to discuss. So I'm glad we were able to get that on the agenda, but I just wanted to express my frustration that my neighbor and I have been emailing people going back to March. Um, our Alderman, the mayor's office, the director of public works, and, um, you know, I felt that we were going through the right channels, so I just don't understand why it took, you know, increasingly irate emails to, you know, different people, to the chief, to, you know, our state rep who I don't think that, you know, that they really need to be contacted. We shouldn't be able to, uh, get him, yeah, get this sort of on the agenda. Um, and I'm a little frustrated with that. Um, you know, that the director of public works will tell my neighbor down the street, it's a paper road. Meanwhile, that's the first I've ever heard of it. We're hearing from everybody, it's going to get paved this or that. Um, and I just feel like there's, there's a problem with communication. Um, and I'm just frustrated with that. Um, so, you know, I hope going forward, we can sort of get that resolved and, and work on this issue.
Great, thank you. And like I said, that, that will come up later and some of the more, more details and, and I know that the city was looking into the, the site specifically, and, and like you said, we went out and looked at it as well. So for those of you that aren't familiar with that, it's an interesting, uh, parcel, to say the least. So that's listed under new business, I think, item number one. So thank you also for coming tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else from the public who wishes to address the board tonight? Just looking around. Anyone else from the public who wishes to address the Board of Alderman? Third and final call. Anyone that wants to speak in the public session? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public session, move on to the public official session. Uh, Mayor Cassetti.
President Stewart, members of the Board of Alderman, residents of the great city of Ansonia. I want to give, begin by thanking this board for your support of our Ansonia Police Department and the new downtown police station. And all your efforts to make this important project a reality. Your hard work is about to pay off. I can tell you tonight that our police force will officially begin moving into our new home on October 27th. With the 9/11 center will transfer operations to downtown. The rest of the department will follow over the course of November. We expect for our downtown police department to be fully operational by Thanksgiving. And that is a wonderful reason to give thanks. But don't think for a second that I forgot about our amazing seniors. The bid for construction of the senior center will be streamlined by $40,000. And a contract will be executed, executed within this week. I will be advising our senior center commission of the official date and time tomorrow, and I would be honored to have them by my side at the signing. Now on to more news. No matter who I speak to in the city, there is a great interest surrounding the future of the Big Y Plaza. Tonight, I want to inform you that the city has been assisting the property owner with the courting of a major grocer to revitalize the site. While the deal is not finalized, the property owner is asking the city to explore the potential of a tax incentive to help make this development possible. I will be calling for a meeting of the tax incentive review board to consider this proposal and prior proposals made by Primrose Development for the YMCA building. Finally, I believe you were left on a bit of a cliffhanger last month when we revealed plans to rehabilitate the recreational facility at Nolan Field. Well, tonight, I would like to confirm that my office is preparing a proposal for this board that will see the creation of a firefighter themed playscape and a splash pad, complete with reconstruction of the basketball courts. Here tonight is the very first look at the sketch prepared by architect James Tate of Tate and Associates LLC. Now here is my staff for additional information about this. Thank you and God bless you all and God bless the city of Ansonia.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we'll move right to, um, Corporation Counsel, John Marini. I'm assuming, um, you're up next and maybe you want to pick up the ball from there.
Thanks, Mr. President. Um, I just want to start off by echoing the mayor's thanks for your support, this support of the downtown police station project. Um, obviously it's been some time coming. Um, this plan has been in, uh, the, in really, uh, conception stage from the beginning of Mayor Cassetti's administration. And though the, uh, location may have changed along the way, the intention has always been the same. Which is to give the, uh, Ansonia Police Department a home that they would be proud of. Um, and, and a, and a better ability, better positioning to serve and protect our residents. And, uh, the mayor's office feels very strongly that this is not just enhancing the, um, the capability of our police force, but also placing it where it's needed most. In the middle of our, um, of our downtown sector, where commercial growth is taking off, where the police presence is needed the most. And, and we view it as really that, that next step, that next, uh, logical evolution, um, of our city. And it would not be possible, the twists, the turns that it took, the challenges along the way, if it wasn't for this Board of Alderman um, to meet every obstacle, to overcome every obstacle, to be creative, very creative, uh-huh, when needed in order to accomplish, uh, what is about to, uh, what is about to be opened next month. So, you know, from, from the mayor, on behalf of the mayor, on behalf of all the staff, thank you so much for having confidence in the project and seeing it through. Um, and we know it's something that you and, and the city will be proud of. Other than that, just a very brief reminder, which I, I want to ram home this point. As things get busier and busier downtown and, and more traffic builds in a, in a growing revitalized area, remember there is a new crosswalk law. You know, and we see all the time as we're crossing, uh, the street over to City Hall or on any crosswalk on Main Street. You know, um, vehicles need to be careful of pedestrians. Remember, there is a new law that requires vehicles to a yield to pedestrians whenever they're in the crosswalk or an extension of their person is in the crosswalk. That could be a hand, that could be a cane. Um, and again, it just bears repeating, remember please, for the safety sake of the pedestrians and of course your own welfare. So you don't get docked what I think is a $500 fine. Um, please remember that new law is in effect and as Main Street becomes more busy, remember that our vehicles have to coexist with pedestrians and that's the case in any healthy downtown. And that's it for now.
Uh, Mr. Marini, can you make sure you get a, a paper copy of that to our chief, Jay Walker? We established you that was.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, any questions for Corporation Counsel tonight from the Alderman? That's for you, Bill.
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Mr. Marini, I was, was reading an article. I'm trying to determine like what exactly, or just get some clarification on it. Olson Drive property, you know, it's, it's sitting on this board for the past two years. I can't seem to recall. Sheila, you might need to mute Sheila.
Got it, got it, got it, Tom.
Can't seem to recall a, a proposal or anything that has come in front of this board where we've actually voted and put forward what, what is going on. So.
So.
Someone needs to mute Sheila.
Got it.
Thanks.
So we have yet to finish the negotiation, right? We have yet to commence the negotiation um, with, with the potential use of the site. You know, we've had a, we've had discussions in terms of selecting what the proposal is that we want to negotiate on, but as, as they've said at past meetings, until that negotiation actually takes place, we don't know whether that will be the, um, the actual project, right? So there's still, um, the due diligence to be done. I think the parties have, especially with COVID, have yet to sit back down at the table to determine where we're going with this. Um, again, the board had refined the proposals, had taken a look at, at a particular concept, but of course there's still much discussion to be done to make sure it's the right fit for the city.
But ju- just to reiterate, there's been no deal that's been signed or voted on. Is that correct?
No deal has been signed or voted on. No deal has been.
There's been.
There's no final agreement. In fact, the discussion has truly not begun. The only thing that was done was the selection of a proposal to discuss, to explore. However, that is a completely different thing from saying that there is a done deal. In fact, we have not yet to discuss the parameters of the deal. In fact, that when I see the specifics of the proposal cited, remember that it's just that, the proposal from the developer, not the city's response, not what is acceptable to the city, not what is acceptable to the Board of Alderman or the mayor, not what has been agreed on by anyone, and anyone suggesting different is not looking at the facts. That is a proposal from the developer and the city will be sitting down to meet with the developer and then bringing back to this board the, the opportunity to negotiate.
All right, so I have two more questions, please. Um, the price of the land that was also noted in the article that there was some sort of agreement. There has been no agreed purchase price on that land either, correct?
No, there has not been because the negotiations haven't commenced. The only thing that you can see is the developer's proposal.
Mm-hmm.
I will say obviously that the reason that this proposal was explored is that the city wants to ensure that there's a way to A, generate revenue, short and long term from the site, and also use the property in a way that's compatible with a livable downtown that is a recreation oriented use, rather than say factories or say affordable housing, say returning Olson Drive to its, uh, to its previous status. We know that there's great interest in the state in doing just that, finding open areas in cities like Ansonia and bringing, uh, housing to those sites, um, housing to satisfy what they believe to be a shortage of affordable, yes, low income housing. But that's not the vision that the mayor's staff has for the city of Ansonia. Rather, it's to generate revenue, create jobs, and where possible in a site like this, preserve a, um, a, a livable character. Uh, for example, holding open field space, um, so suggestions for things like being able to stage concerts. Um, so a mix of private-public use, and, and, and that's what we're hoping to bring to the table once the developer is ready to talk.
And, and my last question is, there was also reference of, of an agreed tax abatement. So there's been no agreed tax abatement either, assuming if there's no deal. There's no land price, there's no tax abatement or agreement or anything of such a thing, correct?
Only a request. So anything you're looking at is a request from the developer, but of course, the response has yet to be given because of course, as you know, this board has yet to be discussing, like any other deal.
Right.
Um, like any other proposal, this is something that needs to go through the Board of Alderman. It needs approval from this board. And we haven't even begun those discussions because COVID had unfortunately, you know, put us in a situation where the developer was not prepared yet to go forward and we had been waiting to actually acquire the parcel, um, which was caught in a rather lengthy, um, I'd say, uh, red ta- some, some lengthy red tape, uh, from the state to be able to get clearance.
Right, yeah. We, I think all of us have been following that closely. I was just a, a little surprised and confused that members of the board thought there was some sort of agreement or, or some sort of rubber stamp deal that had occurred and you know, folks had signed on to that. So I'm just a little, little concerned and a little frustrated based on, so that's all my questions. Thank you.
So, so let me ask a follow-up on Tony's, um, question. A lot of the information came from the Valley Independent on an article that was in the Valley Independent Sentinel. So my question is, if there's really no contract or negotiations, should we be putting that information out there?
So different than an RFP that comes back, Diane, for a.
We, we had an RFP.
There's, there's no.
A proposal.
Which is also public information. Is it not?
Yeah, the proposal has to be public, but of course, once we start negotiating, you know, I would advise as, as counsel that those discussed discussions appropriately occur, occur in executive session. Because you don't want the opposing side to, to, to listen in on, on what we're discussing in terms of strategy.
Okay, so at that point.
Definitely.
Okay.
But what they're looking for was certainly public. You had to see it in order to, uh, select it and the public, of course, deserved to see what that proposal was before knowing that you, uh, selected it.
Other questions for, uh, Corporation Counsel tonight from the Alderman?
Uh, yes, Josh.
Hi, Bill.
Tax incentives, that, that questioning was quite a bit, of course, uh, in this day and age. Is there a list available that allows someone to find out who is operating right now under a tax incentive?
I believe there's only one extended, uh, the ATP Palmer Building is one extended city tax incentive, and I believe Better Packages is the other. I believe had.
Farrell with, with the city?
Had a tax incentive.
From the city?
Or the state. State, excuse me, sorry.
Municipal tax abatement, which is of course not forgiveness of taxes, but a reduction of the increase in taxes that would otherwise occur when more money is invested in a property thereby causing the assessment to go up. It's, it's a little nuanced, but that has only been utilized twice. Once um, for the ATP Palmer Building, and there was actually an extension on that one. So it was a combination of the abatement and a fixed assessment into the future. So ATP is really this, the, the key one, and the other one was extended to Better Packages in their expansion. Those are the only two that the city of Ansonia has authorized, the only two tax incentives.
Okay, thank you. Uh, another question. The crosswalk business, um, I, I think that it would be incumbent on, on the police department or, or whoever, whoever to be sure that the, uh, right-of-way to crosswalks by parked cars is enforced. Because if somebody's standing on the curb, you know, waving their potato chip bag and you can't see them because there's a car that's parked right up to the crosswalk, you got a problem. It's just, um, observation. Actually, you know, it's happened, uh, it's happened to me once. They weren't waving anything, but you know, boom, I came up with this guy in the crosswalk, but I couldn't see him because the car was parked right up close to the crosswalk. I don't know how you enforce it with, except putting cops downtown. It's, um, it's just something to put on the, uh, put out there and we all can think about it because it, um, it can get tricky. And, um, the other thing that I had, um, the, the police department and I guess with that last gully washer we had there back when that hurricane came through and dropped all the water, a substantial amount went pouring through the police station to the point of it compromised one of the elevator shafts and it, that has to be repaired. And my concern is, was that water flow fixed so it won't happen again? And this is, uh, I think we heard, I heard at the police commission meeting, the elevator was still out waiting for chips to come in to repair the electronics on it. And my, and I had another fellow tell me, he actually saw the water running out of the police station when, um, when that rain hit. And, uh, I was wondering if there's any, any, um, advice on that or, um, um, it hasn't been corrected because as you know, once we move in there, we own it. We own it now, actually, but, um, that's, uh, that's all I have.
John, do you have any update on that?
That's been.
Or Sheila? No, maybe Sheila.
Sixty-five, the sixty-five main, uh, issue with the drainage has been rectified.
Okay. Uh, any other questions for Corporation Counsel tonight?
I do. John.
Yep, thank you.
Give a quick update on what's happening with that rock crushing. I know over the weekend there was an issue.
So there, apparently, a resident reached out and believed there was rock crushing going on at the facility. Uh, we reached out to Burns Construction and, uh, they confirmed to us that although the screener was running, there was no rock crushing. Nevertheless, because of the special permit process that the PZ created, um, I'd made the decision to tell, uh, Burns Construction to cease and desist from activity until the special permit application process was complete. Um, again, there was no rock crushing per se, but they did admit that the screener was on. That's, that's sort of the separate part of the process. Um, but, but, but I think that, uh, for clarity, uh, to make sure that everything I think is, is transparent and everyone understands what's going on. Um, you know, I, I've told them and I've also told this to the building department, uh, and zoning enforcement, um, a cease and desist on that activity entirely until the special permits process has completed.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, any other questions from the Alderman for Corporation Counsel? All right, um, Economic Development Director Sheila O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board of Alderman. Just want to, uh, reiterate some of the points that the mayor made, which is of course that the, the police station is, uh, nearing the end and we're, we're expecting that the, uh, PD will be in by, uh, the end of November, if not earlier. And he did talk a little bit about the senior center. We were able to do some value engineering to get the, the dollar amount down, uh, by about forty, probably fifty when all said and done. Um, and we will definitely schedule the, um, the contract signing with the, um, with Diane, you and your board, um, as soon as we have a, a day this week. And then we can get a construction schedule, just how, uh, when they can begin, which I, I believe is as soon as possible. And the length of time that they'll be under construction for the senior center. So that's exciting news. Um, also wanted to, um, to talk a little bit about the Big Y Plaza, hoping that, um, hoping that we can get, uh, a meeting together. The mayor was calling for a meeting with the, with respect to the tax incentive programs. You know, I talk a lot about our tax incentive programs. Um, grateful to Corporation Counsel for crafting a lot of the language. But it's been extremely helpful in Ansonia, uh, just having the tools and the incentives available because we don't have, uh, some of the things that other communities offer. And so this package of incentives that we have, which I am grateful to the board for, for allowing us to have that. Um, I think, I think that's a, makes a tremendous difference in being able to attract, um, interested tenants and developers and, and to keep them here. So, um, grateful to you for. So I'm grateful to you for that and hopefully. We'll continue with the incentives because I think it's worth the private investment. And we have a lot of communities that want to copy or emulate our. Our tax incentive plan. Some have this, have similar. YMCA is an exciting project that's coming up. With two recreational use, reuses for that building that I think will fit in nicely with our community. And of course, Nolan Field, which is up on your screen. This is in no way a representative of a, a full architectural rendering, but they wanted to give us something to. To sort of visualize what some of the changes will be on this site. And as you know, we're, we're, we're looking to do a fire themed splash pad and a fire themed playground and playset. As well as redo the basketball courts, tennis courts, maybe a pickle court, not sure. Haven't, haven't gotten a complete sense of, of whether that would be highly utilized. Or more so than the tennis courts. But in any event, that, that's basically all I wanted to talk about this evening. Unless you have any further questions for me?
I have a statement Sheila, so.
Yes, sir.
Coming back to the, to the tax incentive, you know, unfortunately, as you're saying, folks are trying to, surrounding areas are trying to, you know, copy kind of what we're doing. You know, essentially, if we don't do it, others are going to and they're going to technically steal our lunch. So. You know, to, to turn our nose at a tax incentive to, to literally turn the deal away completely. Just for whatever reason, just, it, it just, it kind of boggles my mind. It makes no sense why. We, we would take such a, a, a hard-nosed approach when other surrounding communities are willing to do that. And technically, take the business from us, which is.
Yes, agreed. And we have difficult properties here in Ansonia, you know, the ones that are left are, are difficult and have, have issues. And, and so this, these incentives help us overcome those issues and attract the businesses. But yeah, thank you. I appreciate your saying that. And also, you know, I guess it's hard for people to under, not understand, but sort of visualize. What the long-term goal is, you know, we, we, I tend to do it myself, want some sort of short-term. You know, what am I getting right away? And with tax incentives, you, you know, you're building up to what will be a long-term plan of sustainability. So.
It's commitment. It's commitment that we're showing that, you know, we're in this for the long haul with the businesses that are coming in. It's not just a quick grab. We want your tax money right up front. We're committed to their investment into our city.
Absolutely. It's a trade-off, Tony. Thank you.
Any other questions for Economic Development tonight from the Alderman?
Darn it, darn it.
All right. Chief Fiscal Officer Kurt Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening to all the board members and the others in attendance. Finance is continuing to work on the fiscal twenty-one audit. Preliminary work is still being completed in anticipation of our auditors arriving shortly. In conjunction with the fiscal twenty-one audit, we are currently reviewing the potential of applying for. Recognition with the Government Finance Officers Association or GFOAs, people are probably familiar with. The three areas we're considering, the first is the COA program. Which would provide a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. Used to be known by its acronym, but we can no longer say the acronym because I guess it's an offensive word. Somewhere in Africa, I'm not sure the exact company, so they're not allowed to use that anymore. The award is given to local governments who go above and beyond the minimum requirements. Of generally accepted accounting principles to prepare comprehensive annual financial reports. That evidence the spirit of transparency and full disclosure. The second one is the budget award, which recognizes local governments that prepare budget documents of a very high quality. That reflect both the guidance established by the National Advisory Council on state and local budgeting. And the GFOA's best practices on budgeting. And the third, and this one's gonna take a little bit more time, but. It's the popular annual financial reporting award. Which encourages local governments to extract information from their comprehensive annual financial audit to produce reports specifically designed. To be readily accessible and easily understandable to the general public and other interested parties without background in public finance. Receiving any of these awards is extremely difficult. I would not necessarily expect to receive any in our first year applying. The process will absolutely benefit, benefit us as it will show our residents our desire to produce and provide the highest quality financial reporting possible. Work on the fiscal year twenty-three budget has officially begun. A memo went out to all department heads outlining expectations. A working document with all formulas has been created and we will spend the next two and a half months reviewing and analyzing preparation of Mayor. Mayor Cassetti's budget presentation in early February. I'd like to give a special shout out to our new assessor, David Grabash, who is already prepared and submitted his budget. Of course, that's just the expense side. He still has some work to do on the income side, which of course is the grand list. Which we expect to have by the end of January. And if I could also say David's budget came in less than last year, which is actually quite impressive. Finally, we have almost reached the fifty percent completion mark in our time and attendance project. This will completely automate our payroll process. Our initial goal is November first, but we may be, we may need to push that out to December first. I'll keep you updated on our progress. So with that, that's all the information I have and I'll take any questions anyone may have.
Questions from Alderman for Mr. Miller?
Kurt, it's Tony. I just want to commend you and your team on your, you know, constant commitment to automation, efficiency and just, you know, building a better process. Seems like a lot of these. Things you've turned over in, in the past, you know, year and a half, two years, and it just seems the. Processes are getting much more streamlined, much more efficient and sustainable. So, you know, cheers to you and your team for that. Kind of had another question. We covered this last month and I kind of wanted to just, maybe if you can cover it again for us. The, the RF funds that are coming to Ansonia. Again, there was another article, a lot, a lot of articles this month came out. But again, had some confusion around or I guess looking for additional oversight. So can you just talk about? What oversight is needed? And again, I think you covered the strict guidelines that were needed. Can you just cover what exactly is needed? What do we have to send back when we are utilizing those funds once we actually take receipt of them?
Yeah, the United States Treasury has established a very strict criteria for usage of the funds. And I keep everything right to my, to my side, but there is a list and I know it's really hard to see, but every expense. That we take needs to qualify and be labeled. And there needs to be very specific backup on things. Again, this is, it's, it's five point four million. I know it seems like a lot of money, but it's actually not. We've had grants over the last couple of years that have been substantially bigger. Than that, we have a lot more need than we have money. So, you know, we have to follow this, this process very specific, primary uses for this money. Are things for improvement of wastewater treatment and water, obviously air quality. Things that will benefit children. And then things that will, will try to prevent the future spread of something like COVID. So, you know, the project that is being done. At Nolan Field will be, will be paid for out of ARP funds, which I think is a great project, benefits our kids. But at the same time, gives them a, a new updated outdoor space to play in. So we're going to follow the rules very. Very closely. They are very strict because the biggest concern I have is. We spend some money on this and for some reason it doesn't qualify. And then the city now somehow is on the hook for those funds. So. You know, we're taking this extremely serious in the finance department. Myself, Rich and Kim. Are keeping a very close eye on everything, making sure we have every piece of information that we need to properly file. Thank you.
Thanks. Bill?
Yes, Mr. Miller. The, are you soliciting any input from, well, our board or, or any other? Agencies within the city on potential availability of those funds or is this strictly an in-house? Executive decision-making process and how money's going to be spent?
Anyone can make recommendations of things that they would like to, to spend the money on. There have been some things people have come forward and said, hey, I'd like you to consider. X, Y, and Z, and we have to explain to them why X, Y, and Z would not qualify. So any board commission. Employee, if you have a recommendation, I mean, bring it forward. We kind of put it through first with a, a lens of does it qualify or not? And then if it qual, if it were to qualify as eligible to use for the money. But at that point, we look at some of the overall capital plans and things that we've been developing over the last year. To see how that fits in and, you know, how we would be able to continue building off any initial investments that we make. Because again, to use this money. Just kind of haphazardly is a mistake. We need to be investing in things, but more importantly, have a plan to continue that investment as the years go on.
That will, I presume be shared with the, with the public or the board as it develops with some kind of a list. I know legally, if, correct me if I'm wrong, because of the size of the amount, we're not required to produce a list or solicit input, but. I, I, because I noticed that Fairfield had a substantial list. Published in the paper and, and quite an effort was put into allocating the twenty-four million that they got. And then of course, we all know about West Haven, you know, they got, they got themselves in a bit of trouble apparently because. They did exercise the questions that you explained. You are being very diligent. And, and doing because we sure don't want to have to pay it back. And the other, other question I had was. Last month, I think it was when we were talking about finding funds to top off the senior center and you said that. We had gotten a one point eight million dollar grant of some sort from the state of Connecticut. And that I think you had gotten a million of it and you were hopeful that the other. Point eight hundred thousand was coming. Is, did I understand that correctly? That there could be money coming from the state that'll be at our disposal?
The, the one point eight that you're speaking of was a, a new initiative that was put in as a revenue stream by the governor. It was one point eight million listed as a distressed municipality type funding. It's scheduled right now to be for two years. We didn't think it was prudent during the budget process to allocate the entire amount because as we all know, the state of Connecticut has promised us money multiple times. And has not come through with that. So we only budgeted about half of that amount. And the other reason we did that, even if we are, even if we do get this. For the next year, myself, Rich and Kim have already started talking about this. We're, we're actually going to step that down in the next budgets and probably cut that initial million down to five hundred thousand, even if we get another one point eight million. Because again, if we keep budgeting the one point eight million, one point eight million, we get to year three, the one point eight million is not there. So we've created a deficit in our budget just by not properly planning this out. So. So I guess the long answer to that is, assuming this money comes in, we would have the potential to have. Some cash available, but we're kind of earmarking this additional cash if it comes in for. Cost shares on grants. We've been very successful, as you all know, over the last couple of years in getting grants. And one of the biggest things that slows us down is coming up with the money for these matches. So this would be money, a pool of money that would be readily available to be able to match. Some of these grants to again, to move some of these projects and things forward.
Thank you. Very interesting.
Kurt, because we moved two ticks on the stressed municipality list, does that have any impact on what's allocated over to Ansonia?
It should not, no.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions for Mr. Miller tonight from the Alderman?
Well, if, if I could just say though, I mean, it's only two ticks, but that's a positive.
Oh, I agree. I'm not downplaying that. No, 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 no. Don't take that as that, that's, that's, that's huge.
And that's something that all the, you know, everyone on this board and, and the entire staff and should be very proud of. You know, and a lot of the things that are on. The criteria, not necessarily things that could be controlled by the city per se. A lot of it has to do with the overall improvement of the city. What we're seeing is. Some of the investments and the decisions being made by the Board of Alderman, by the mayor, by, by boat. Is improving the overall quality of life in the City of Ansonia, which is allowing our residents to improve their standing. Which in turn is slowly moving us up this list. So it, it, it's a great thing that we've moved up, even though it's only two ticks, it's still a great thing.
Yeah, I hope there wasn't the impression that I wasn't impressed by that. I'm kind of a big guy. I, I did a few cartwheels. There's no video of it, but I was, I was rather thrilled. So.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a nice feather in the mayor and everyone's cap.
Yeah. Yeah. Cheers to everyone for that.
Other questions for finance? Last call. All right. And then we are last update for public official. I see. Police, or I see Chief Williams.
I am, I am here, Josh.
Floor is yours.
All right. Some of you may notice that I'm, I'm working off of a cell phone right now in my office. I will let you know that ever since we keep announcing. That we're moving to sixty-five Main Street, our current building is being offended and is starting to shut down on us. Some of our internet services stopped and the, some of our entry doors have no longer functioned. So I think we've offended our building. I'm more serious. No, I, I want to thank everybody in the city. Our officers, our vendors and everybody who's worked with us on trying to get us into our new facility. I thank you all for your assistance. The officers, myself and everybody is looking forward to the new home. The time has come. It was, it's long overdue and we have all been working on it for a long period of time and it'll be, it'll be good to come to fruition. As for within the city, I wanted to let you know a couple of things we're working on. And I know Mr. Mamon, this is one of your hot topics that we've talked about in the past. We are working on personnel and financial impacts. Of some of the upcoming deadlines for the police accountability bill that was passed. You, you are aware that we have already signed some agreements regarding body cams, et cetera. We are working on some additional agreements. But there are new deadlines coming up for certain parts of the. Of the bill and we're also working with the city on some long-range plans for the impacts of the bill. Because in a couple of years, there is a, a much larger one that is, that is going to come due. When it comes to the Kalia certification of the, of the police department. So. We are working with the state right now and City Hall on some grant opportunities that have, that have popped up. For both body cams and bulletproof vests that we have been supplying to our officers. A couple of years ago, you may remember, we changed the way that we had bulletproof vests issued to officers and the city now takes over all the costs. I can't express enough that that is a good thing. To be able to update these vests on a regular basis for the officers and there are grants out there that help us with some of the costs. The Harvest Festival and the Five K Griffin Road Race went very well. So kudos to everybody that was involved in those. I have some personnel, good news and bad news. The good news, we've got some new officers on the street. Officer Ramirez, Officer Roberio and Officer Arbigas have finished their field training and they're out on the streets. Officer Elena is just finishing up hers and she'll be on the streets also in a short matter of time. If you were at the Harvest Festival, some of them were down there and they, I know they met a lot of people while they were down there. I think they're welcome additions. On the sad side of it, two of our detectives, our senior detectives have announced their retirement from the agency. I don't normally talk about personnel matters, but Detective Brian Hart, Detective Stephen Agcox are two of our senior detectives. Both of them have retired from the agency. They were responsible for numerous serious investigations on state and federal investigations. I wish them, I thank them for their service and I wish them nothing but the best of luck in the future. I believe that's all I got for you and I'll take any questions that you may have.
Questions for the chief from the Alderman. Joe?
Yeah, Chief Williams. I just wanted to salute you and your officers for doing what a good job you're doing. You're leading the officers. And protecting the city. The new officers, the training process, you're able to lead the department into the future. That will be proud to enter the new police department building. Just want you to let them know how proud we are of them and. For doing their job, a great job. And also at the last police. And uh also at the last police commission meeting, there was a uh discussion concerning Orchard Street. And uh South Street three-way stop. I don't know if you got out there and looked at anything yet, but if you do, I would really appreciate getting out there with you. Uh, if you can plan that, I'd really appreciate contact with that. And that's all I have. Thank you, chief.
Yeah, that's no problem. I appreciate the uh the compliments and for you, again, the people that were at the Harvest Festival. Um, you saw that the police had a table set up down there and uh I have to tell you, the public treated the officers there like rock stars. Uh, they were coming up wanting to take pictures with them, have their kids take pictures with them, so uh. It is something that I explain to our officers on a regular basis. There is a national sentiment. And there is a local sentiment and they are different.
Very professional.
They are rock stars. Not like rock stars, they are rock stars.
So, like, like I said, uh, I'm passionate about this department. I've been here a long time and uh these officers um. Feel that from the, from the public when they deal with the public, so.
We thank them.
Chief, I have a quick question. Uh, the first speaker in the public session mentioned an incident this weekend. Um, up near Ford Street, near their property. I was gonna say that they mentioned um him and his neighbor mentioned when I spoke with them that. It was uh got a very dark uh portion of the street. Um, and I didn't know if you had any intel or or update on that as far as um. You know, if that contributed to the incident, you know, being easy to happen or, you know, whatever. Cause I know that they were looking into to requesting lighting, um, street lighting uh from you.
Um, I did take some notes on it and I'm going to look into it with our operations lieutenant in the morning just to see if uh if lighting did have an impact. I know that we had some uh people come in from out of town that were involved in the theft of a car up off of Kruger Court and some other uh. Some other uh thefts up there. Um, but I will also look into that and find out uh if the lighting up there. Um, had any play. I know that, you know, depending on where you are up there on that street. Uh, lighting and and I think we all saw that when it was uh the Weekly Avenue lighting. Um, the runway that we put up on Weekly Avenue, that uh while a lot of lighting is great. Sometimes the neighbors don't always want that much lighting. Um, but I will definitely uh. I will definitely take a look into it and I'll get back to you if I think uh that lighting or darkness up there on the hilltop um was part of the problem. Talking about the um Ford Street address, the one thing I did have uh and and I guess that would go more towards blight or. The building apartment, is there any way or has there any conversations with them about completely blocking it off or sealing off that? Building or parking lot. I know it's been vacant for uh for many, many years now. And uh I definitely can feel the frustration of some of the residents there, even when I talk to them about that building.
It does have a temporary barricade on the entrance. At least on the Ford Street side, I know that there's there's cones in a in a chain or a rope or something like that across the front of it. Yeah, I don't know. But it's it's there to at least prevent.
It doesn't keep anybody going in there, though.
Yeah, correct, correct. And and like I said, I know the building is vacant. Um, and I know that the the. You know, what the concerns are with any vacant building in anywhere in the city, so um, but I also take a look at what that incident was from uh from over the weekend.
Thank you. And I have one other quick question. Um, brought up recently about the potentially getting a mirror on. Dead Man's Curve on Highland and High Street, where where there used to be a mirror. Um, where you have to kind of come out eighty miles an hour or more either direction.
Yeah, that's back with Public Works, though.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, yeah, we don't, we do put up, uh, the Traffic Commission has authorized signs. We do put up signs, however, we do not put up uh. We do not put up the mirrors. I think we forwarded that off to uh Public Works for them to put it back up, yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, Josh, I'm waiting for that update from Mike and if uh if I don't hear from him in the next, you know, day or so, then I'm I'll either give him a buzz or. You know, ask the mayor to reach out.
Okay, thanks. Uh, any other questions for the chief tonight from the Alderman? All right, thank you. Thanks for coming.
No, you're welcome. Thank you.
All right, let's move on to uh committee reports, Finance Committee. Anyone? Bueller?
I'll make, hold on, make a motion to pay all bills if deemed correct.
Motion to pay our bills by Mamon, second by Tar, all in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion passes. Thank you. Let's see. We have any other committee reports uh from any of you? I I sort of uh. Uh, cut down because a lot of, a lot of committees that have been listed haven't been giving updates, so do any of the Aldermen have updates on? Specific committees or meetings they've gone to?
I can just, I'll I'll just update on regionalization. Uh, the la- the last meeting that was supposed to occur yesterday was canceled. There'll be a meeting at the end of the month, we're hopeful. We've had some uh actually scheduled on Columbus Day, which was somewhat of a mistake. Uh, we did not realize it at the time because it was originally supposed to be the uh. The dates kind of got switched at the last time we actually met in person, but we're anticipating meeting. I believe it's the. Fourth Tuesday, if I'm not mistaken, of the month. At seven-thirty virtually on Zoom, I encourage everybody else to come. We're down to the last couple of questions. Uh, before we make a determination as to feasibility and we'll probably be discussing shared services as well, so.
Thank you. Uh, any other committee reports? Joe, Cassetti?
Well, uh, housing and fire.
Yep.
We're gonna be getting together with the Housing Committee. Or the Housing Commission is uh gonna be getting together with Ansonia Housing. And we're gonna be discussing the um fire safety at the housing authorities. Um, uh, buildings, so uh. I'm not exactly sure what the whole agenda is gonna be about, but. Uh, once I do know, I'll I'll let everybody else know uh the outcome of that meeting.
Thank you, Joe. And did you want an update on fire or no?
No, I haven't got anything.
Okay. Any other uh committee reports from the Alderman?
Yep. I just wanted to ask Joe. Joe, is the date set already for that, for the meeting?
Yeah, it is going to be on the fourteenth. Uh, it's, and you're welcome to come too, Diane, if you want to.
I'm on that commission.
It's it's, it's at seven PM at the uh at the Housing Authority, but it's through the back entrance. You know, we're gonna be coming in through the back.
The East Main Street.
Yeah, the back of Main Street entrance there, the the like where Eddie's Bake Shop area was. Um, park back there and just uh, there should be a, an open door for uh for you to come in.
All right.
All right, we're we're hoping to get some things done with them. I don't know what their proposal is gonna be, but I look forward to hearing what they have to say anyways.
All right.
Thank you.
Other uh Alderman committee reports? Going ones? All right, let's see. Municipal reports, uh, boat recommendations you had included in your uh packet, the municipal report from October fourth, twenty-twenty-one. Boat meeting. Move a motion to accept that report.
So move.
Motion by Cassetti, second by Rivers, all in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? Your motion carries unanimously, thank you. Um, moving on, we got the, where we got? Got the land use report. Um, which from the September meeting?
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept by Yamman.
Second.
Second by Rivers, all in favor? Any opposed? Abstaining. Right, motion carries unanimously to accept that report. Just want to note again, the. Building Department revenue just for the month of twenty September of this year was thirty-seven thousand. One hundred and thirty dollars and fifteen cents, so they continue to bring in the. Bring in the revenues, so thank you. Um, let's see. What else we got? Tax collector report, request for refunds.
Have an interesting note on that. There was a. They reached out to Johanna on on just one of the items on here because there was three different years that were noted and apparently there's a. Three-year look-back period that we could do. Uh, in this case, the one noted here was uh due to Waterbury, so we ended up. Refunding or reclassing the money from Ansonia and and over to Waterbury, so. But I'll make a motion to accept the. Tax collector refund report in the total amount of nine-thousand-five-hundred-forty dollars and eighty-four cents for the month of October.
Yeah, I've got a question on that uh before we process. There was an item in there. Um, a thirty-four-hundred-dollar refund to uh One Fifteen Prospect LLC. Does, does anybody know what that is? It seemed like a lot of money going back to uh one taxpayer. And it just raised a question then from the size of it.
What was the um, what was the the um name again?
I think it was the the first line on the report, I think it was One Fifteen Prospect something LLC.
Yes, One Fifteen Prospect Street LLC.
I can look into that. I I also want to note that Tony, you said uh the the report for October, that's that's the September.
Oh, September.
Yeah, it's a September report, but that the amount you stated ninety-five-hundred is correct. Um. Yeah, I can look into that uh individually if you want and get back and get back to you. Um, I can't even put that on the spot, but. Um, we want to, we want to vote on that?
You have a second.
We have a, uh. Yeah, second by, uh, okay.
A second.
Second by Strowman. I'll star that to look back at it. Good catch, Tony. Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, accept that report unanimously.
That was Bill that caught the uh the thirty-four-hundred on the top line there.
Yeah, I guess it was my catch on this, on the September, October, my bad. Um, yeah, thanks, Bill. Um, and I will get back to you on that. So there were four claims, um, claim number, uh, just for simplicity sake on. Zero-nine-two-one and then one zero-one-five, one-zero-one-six, one-zero-one-seven. And one-zero-one-eight off uh Carter Mario Law Firm versus City of Ansonia, and all four of them are. Um, personal injuries.
Motion to refer to counsel.
Second.
Motion to refer counsel by Yamman, second by Tar, all in favor?
Uh, nine.
Corporation counsel. Uh, we have uh three communications. The first communication is from Jeff Bryce. Um, President of Ansonia Soccer Club. This was a request for. Uh, an allocation of two thousand dollars uh for the fall twenty-twenty-one and two thousand dollars for spring twenty-twenty-two. For a total of four thousand dollars for the soccer.
Do we still, do we still have that in the line for the uh the sports contingency?
I I was gonna say, if I could, Mr. President, for you, um, as you know, instead of uh individually funding. Uh, you sports, there is one uh straight account that is controlled by the Alderman. And one of the things uh we had established was that they would need to come to the Alderman to request the money. And then at that point, uh, this board could determine if they wanted additional information or how they wanted to to proceed. So that's where this uh request is coming from and why it's in front of you.
Can we get an update, um, Mr. Miller, on how much is still in that account?
Um, off the top of my head, I believe there is about fifteen thousand left in that account, but I would need to confirm. Um, some of that money needed to be used. We displaced the cheerleaders uh because of the work being done at the Armory, so we needed to pay. Uh, for them to practice in a private facility.
I was gonna say, I don't recall any other of the of the sports organizations coming to us to 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 utilize this, I think.
Exactly.
I think soccer might be the first one.
They are the first.
Yeah, because um, no one really knew the the process, so um. We're trying to put it out, um, what's the process now? So you will be getting more.
Yep, thank you, Chicago. Yeah, this is what we set up. They have that one big account and then it it comes individually from them as opposed to us. Quabbling about individual allotments for teams and then. Uh, yeah, Diane.
Is this, do we know if this is in line with the amount of money that they've received in the past?
I thought they got less, to be honest, but um.
I do too.
I believe it was two thousand uh is what they would receive each.
In the past, oh. Okay.
So was, so was that two thousand dollars per season or two thousand for the fall and spring season?
I believe it was two thousand in total. Uh, but I think they're trying to uh make the point that they actually have two seasons. That's why they're requesting money for a fall season as well as a spring season.
Wow, so they did it before with two thousand?
I I I believe so, but that was before I got here, so I can't say with a hundred percent certainty.
Yeah.
Joe?
Isn't Jeff Coppola in charge of this? Doesn't he oversee the financial end of this uh?
No.
No?
No, he get the requests and they uh come to us from him.
I think they they've run their requests through him already, but he still, they still have to bring it to us for final approval. That was the process.
They have to, or does Jeff have to?
They do.
They do.
They requested a few.
All right. Well, it doesn't sound unreasonable. If they need it, uh, I'm in favor of it.
Yeah, I would, I would second it.
Well, I mean, it's not the point of uh 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 of going against it. Um, I'm just. Questioning in um if they were doing it two thousand before with the fall and the spring. While all of a sudden it has doubled now. I mean, that's, that's all I'm questioning.
Probably COVID is uh probably somewhere in that metric.
And what I can tell, I mean, I'm just, I'm speaking off the sheet that was submitted with the letter, Chicago. Is that there, it looks like they received about forty-four-hundred in fiscal year nineteen-twenty. They received two thousand in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. And twenty-one, twenty-two, it looks like the request is four thousand, so I I I I do recall them receiving more than two thousand in the past. Um, it may have been that that was a reduced amount during uh the COVID year, um, because they, I I don't know if they had two full seasons.
Okay.
They also saw their increases in insurance and their administrative fees, so.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Motion by uh Cassetti, second by Phipps, to accept this, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions?
If I could, if I could, Mr. President, what did you accept? The two thousand for the fall semester, small semester.
Two thousand for fall, spring. Two thousand for fall twenty-twenty-one and two thousand for spring twenty-twenty-two for a total of four thousand for the year.
Okay, so then what we'll do is we'll pay them out two thousand now and then we'll encumber two thousand to pay them in the spring.
Perfect. All right, motion.
That's gonna get in, that'll get in the expense cycle for this year, correct? Not next budget, correct?
Uh, that, the check will probably go out, uh, the two thousand hour check will probably go out next week. Um, and then the incumbents will go in right away, so it'll be in fiscal twenty-two.
Got it, okay.
All right, uh, well, while we got you on the line, uh, Mr. Miller, we have two communications from the Finance Department, Communication Number Two. Um, transfer from uh municipal parking fund request and Communication Three was. Transfer from Parking Authority for Parking Study. Would you like to, would you or the city like to talk us through this?
Yeah, as you know, we have um the Parking Authority Fund. Um, which that is money that comes from fees obtained throughout the city for parking, uh primarily from the East Main Street lots. Uh, we had about two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars um in that account. And as projects are coming up, we're looking at this for a revenue source, but again, we're trying to keep it very tight and very specific. The things that either A have to do with parking or things that are right there. Uh, along East Main Street by the parking lot. So one of the things uh you'll be looking at tonight. Uh, is funding for a parking study for the downtown, which I think obviously is a a great use of that money. There is also money. Uh, to do some tree work uh for the, I will call it the wooded area just above the Spain Street lot. Some of the trees, branches are coming down into the parking lot, which could be a problem, uh, so we need to get that addressed. And then the other is uh to, again, match part of uh some grant work that was done for the building across the street. Um, folks will more than likely be parking in that parking lot. Um, so again, I I I think it all makes sense. So we're trying to use this money for very specific uh things. So we're trying to use this money for very specific, uh, things associated with its, um, I guess with its origin.
All right, so are there any questions or do you guys want me, I can put these up on the screen if you'd like. Uh, Communication Two, just give me a second.
Paul, if I can just add one thing while you're doing that, we are, uh, still in the process of reviewing the three specific contracts that we have with the East Main Street Lots. Um, and I expect, well, we'll be in front of this board in either November or December, uh, with recommendations.
Okay, so memo, oh, go ahead.
It's okay, I was just gonna say the parking study is gonna tie into that lot, Kurt, along with recommendations for what's, what makes best economic sense for the city and what would be most convenient for our residents as well.
Okay, so the first one we have is Communication Two. This is the requesting transfer from the Municipal Parking Fund, uh, requested for a downtown parking study, project study to be done by Dave Elder. Um, and then the, you got the documentation, the rest of the documentation in your packet.
Didn't we do a parking study prior to the construction, I thought, or is this a new one? It's, it's confusing, but we did a, we did a traffic study for, um, Upper East, uh, Lower East Maine in the Big Y area, and we've done, um, design and study work for East Maine. This is an overall study of our downtown parking needs, which we did, well, the city did quite a, quite a few years ago. I think about fifteen years ago, and this would be an updated, more comprehensive look at our parking needs as, as the topic comes up, as development increases, PDs downtown, our new apartments going online. Um, all of this is done, is done to, uh, provide some, some clarity on where we need to be with our parking issues, if we have any.
And I, and I would just go further than that, is that also planning and zoning can rely upon this when assigning parking spots for some of the, uh, the site plans that are being submitted and the various other, um, zoning rules and regulations, so.
Right, good point, Joe.
Yeah, I, uh, I would, uh, I would, um, like to see the report to bring it up to date and it'll be money well spent. And I'm, I just have, uh, a, a glass half-empty, uh, kind of, um, uh, concern that we might get surprised, uh, because a lot of times I've noticed in planning and zoning, we've deferred to, yeah, there's the municipal parking lot, that'll cover your parking requirement. And I'm just hoping that we haven't done that too much, and when everything that's on the table finally becomes to brick and mortar, I hope we're not, uh, scratching our heads, but this report will.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good thought, Bill, and also, you know, um, we've just now increased another hundred spaces um, between a hundred and a hundred and twenty with East Main Street, so that will help support any need for additional parking spaces. But, uh, according to our city planner, at least from what he has preliminarily observed, we're gonna find that we're, um, underutilized, we have underutilized spaces. But we'll see what happens.
I'd be looking forward to see that report.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, could, can I ball these two together since they're, since they're related, or do you?
There's another one, too.
I, I was gonna ask a point of clarification. It seems that the, this memo that you had just put up, Josh, was that, is that Communication Number Three, which is on the agenda, is transfer from Parking Authority for Parking Study?
Yeah, the two thousand seven that I had just put up.
Yeah.
The memo, right, the memo from October twelfth.
Yeah.
Okay, for forty-one thousand seven, seven twenty?
Correct, and then the other one was, um, where is it? Communication?
This is for the, Communication Two would be the tree work, the East Main Street Parking Project.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
If you're, Mr. President, if you're gonna ball them together, if you can just list or state each memo, uh, that way, if the auditor has a question, we can refer back and both memos will be mentioned individually.
No, let's do, we'll do them separate. So Communication Number Two, um, listed on the agenda, transfer from Municipal Parking Fund Request from Finance.
Make that motion.
Motion by Rivers.
Second.
Now, this is, this is the Dave Elder one?
This is the, no, this is Memo Number Two and the amount of, what, ninety-five thousand, three ninety-five?
Yes.
Is that the V, is that the VHB one?
Yes.
That's the VHB project and the tree one.
Tree one, hearing.
I didn't even see a tree one.
There's three things.
Yeah, the VHB one, I had questions on. I didn't quite understand it, the, the amount of money involved and I don't understand why that is, wasn't built into the grant, uh, monies, because it's, it's the same piece, it's the same activity.
Yeah, part of, part of your responsibility for the grant that we used on East Main Street is to do the design and the inspection services, and so that's what you're seeing, uh, some of that funding for.
Yeah, let me, I, I have that one too, hang on. One, one of these, when they got sent as an update, it was mislabeled as Communication Two, but it was actually Communication Three.
Uh-huh, okay.
I believe that, so this is Communication Two.
All right.
Um. Ongoing East Main Street Parking Project, two VHB contract amendments and the quote for tree work. And I, we know we discussed this a couple of months ago about the, um, the inspections and, and all that, some of that stuff, and if you do it separately, it's way more expensive than, um, balling it together with, with VHB, like doing it.
I, I also want to point out that VHB indicates to me that the construction amount of this grant is gonna come in under what the bid was for, so they'll be saving us money in, in that regard on, on the, uh, project. VHB almost always comes in under. Wait.
So another way to put this i- in my mind would be, we're getting there, all these additional parking spaces on East Main Street and it's costing us round number ninety thousand dollars.
Well.
Because the rest of it comes out.
You got a grant for almost four hundred thousand.
That's what I'm saying.
Yep, yes, Bill.
Okay.
And Sheila, just to clarify, your, your last point is that in terms of coming in under, that means that we would recruit, recruit a greater portion of what we're putting in right now.
Correct, correct.
Yes, Joe.
So.
Thanks, Joe.
Sure.
Yeah, the scope of services is later, uh, page, whatever this is, Attachment A goes through all, everything they're gonna do. Other questions on this one?
Is this a done, done deal yet, this, uh, East Main Street business? Because there's no lights yet and, um.
Not yet.
I mean, will this close the door or do they still have liability?
Oh, no, there's still work to be done, Bill.
Okay, yeah, because I, uh, my eye, my eye was caught by all that white on the street there the other day, so I went and nosed around a little bit and looked about nice, basically, uh.
Thank you.
It remains to be seen if the drivers can tolerate it, but that, that's gonna be another story. Um, the only other observation I made, and it could be being picky, is there's, there's a, there's a, um, reserved space for fire hydrants and, um, parking lots and corners and to my pacing, it looked like they're real close on the fire hydrants. You've gotta have ten feet space either side of the fire hydrant and and unless I'm wrong, I could be wrong, it seemed like it was real tight.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, but I can certainly check with the engineers on that. I know they, I know they, uh, have to, have to put, put, put in the design according to code.
Right, exactly. I think this is our code, city code.
Okay.
Ten feet and twelve feet.
Uh, I can check, Bill.
Yeah, all right, that, that was just an observation, but other than that, uh, a whole lot of white down there. Looks good.
Thank you.
Is the fine doubled if you jaywalk by a fire hydrant? I'm just curious.
You might get wet.
And so the offender is Tony. There's, there's a, there's a blacklist.
There is only one on that list.
Yeah. Outed, outed himself. All right, so Communication Two, we have a, uh, motion in a second. Any further discussion on that one? All right, so mo- uh, motion to, uh, approve that, Communication Two, that's the larger of the two.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, and then, uh, the third, the number three, I'll put that back up again, is, um, the study. So.
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve that.
Uh, wrong, wrong one.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
I got like eight million documents open. Sorry, I'm trying to find the right one here.
I got it. It's not labeled number three, though. I got it. It, it's the memo dated October twelfth.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. That's, that's, that was revised.
Yeah, this was the revised one that came updated memo, forty-one thousand seven twenty Downtown Parking, uh, Project and Study.
I'll move on that.
All right, motion by Phipps.
Second.
Second by Tar. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion passes unanimously. All right, Kurt, it's all up to you now. You take care of it from here. Thank you, guys. Uh, resignations, we have none, uh, resolutions, we have none, appointments, we have none, ordinances, we have none. Two items under new business.
Gosh, stop dragging the papers across the laptops. Fuzzy, can't hear you. Sorry.
Um, item number one is the Kimberly Lane status, uh, is a, uh, private paper road request to reconsider. Uh, we had a, we had a speaker at the beginning, uh, Stella.
Yep, can I, uh?
And we'll turn this over to Sheila.
Yeah, I'll take a, a stab at it. So, uh, this, this issue was brought to our attention by Alderman de Libro and Alderman Blackwell. Um, we met, uh, Alderman Schur and I met with two, the two residents who live, uh, on Kimberly Lane. I think it's section two, lot, uh, part two. Um, it's, it's extremely, what we found out was it's a very, complicated, uh, issue. It's not, it's not as clear cut as you would think, and I don't think most people even realize where this area is. Um, but the residents are expressing concerns about, um, well, it's not a city road. They, they have septic, I believe, uh, private septic and, um, and so they are asking for this board and on behalf of, uh, Frank and Dave, uh, they are asking for consideration of, um, making this street a public street rather than a private street. It was a, seemed to be a developer that developed these lots um, without, without recording that on the deeds that the, that the street was not public. Um, sort of miss, maybe perhaps misrepresented, I don't know, but what we are doing is looking into, um, what's on the deed, the title and so forth, and try to determine, um, you know, what, what if anything we can do, uh, for, for these residents.
Sure, I mean, in addition to that, it seems to me that there's a question as to the ownership of this particular road, so it'd probably be appropriate to also send it for an eight twenty-four to Planning and Zoning to get some feedback from them, um, because that way at least we're in a position whereby if there is, you know, if we get in a position where we can do something, at least we'll have the approval or disapproval from Planning and Zoning and nowhere to go.
Second.
Sheila. John wants to weigh in on this.
Yeah.
Let's.
Is this, um, the Kimberly Lane part, the ones over towards Ben Street?
No. I'm gonna add my two cents and then we're gonna go to John, um, for, for some legal, but, um, so there's two Kimberly Lanes, which is, I think, part of the confusion. One of them's over by Ben's, which is the one you referred to, which everyone knows of. If you're going past, if you go, if you're looking at Santini's Pizza and you go down this, up the street there, up Myrtle, and you get to the end of Myrtle, um, the, all of a sudden, there's a sign for a Kimberly Lane, which goes into the, essentially goes into the woods straight up the hill. And there's, uh, was it water, uh, Stella, is it Water Authority property on the left-hand side?
It was Water Company property, I wanna say till probably the mid nineties at least or so, late nineties, and at some point, I don't know when it transferred to the state. It is now state property.
Okay, and then there's a total of two houses, um, on that property. There's a, there was a third parcel that was sold, I think, this summer, but strangely was sold under the address of one oh five Myrtle Ave, even though it was located on this Kimberly Lane. So if you continue going past the two houses, there's kind of like a cart path spot that eventually could lead you up to the other Kimberly Lane that you asked about. So it's like, but it, but you couldn't drive a car from their house to the other Kimberly Lane is the point. Um, so it's a really steep incline driveway, um, uh, area and it's off of, it's essentially the end of Myrtle Ave and then it.
I know exactly where it is. My aunt used to live up there.
Yeah, so John, can we turn it to you?
Mrs. Parks, you're on.
Yeah.
Mrs. Parks, she was the best. I'm sorry.
John, John, I know was looking into, into this from, uh, other angles as well, so.
Yeah, so we're trying to see what we can do to help here. Um, it appears to be that this is, uh, you know, was, was never officially a public road. It's not clear what the intention of the developer was. In a lot of situations where the road remains private, there's an association created to take care of the road. It's written into the deeds to ensure that the homeowners take care of the road, but it doesn't seem that that's the case here, right? And so we're looking through the deeds to make sure nothing was missed, but one thing is for sure, whoever created this didn't take the proper steps to have this accepted as a city road. The Board of Aldermen never did. So along the way, it looks like the city in past years, and not just recent history, going back to the nineties, it looks like the city might have, um, done things to be able to, to help the residents on the road take care of the infrastructure. Um, so the question is now, you know, going forward, you know, what is the city's position? Does it want to accept this as a road? Um, or take another action? Or again, we're trying to firm up what the intentions originally were. How, how was it created, right? You know, what's the story of how this was created? What was it supposed to be? It looks to me that this maybe just fell through the cracks, right? The developer really just didn't take the proper steps. But, um, once we get the answers as to how this was created, we can make a decision as to what to do next. Of course, this board could certainly vote to accept it as a city road, um, if it was so inclined. Eight twenty-four would certainly be a necessary prerequisite before doing that. Um, we're at the stage where we're really looking at the deeds, trying to figure out what the story is. Hoping by the time we get to Planning and Zoning, we have that story. That way we give this board all the options, um, you know, that, that might help here, that may move forward.
All right, so we, we did have a motion by Yaman and seconded by Cassetti to refer this to P and Z for an eight twenty-four referral. Do we wanna go ahead with that?
Yep.
Yep, all right, uh, all in favor of doing that?
Aye.
Any opposed or tensions? All right, and John, you'll keep investigating as well.
Yeah, I'll go to the Planning and Zoning, I'll follow up with the eight twenty-four and talk to them on that. Again, I'm very curious as to how this originated, but, um, you know, certainly there's a way that, uh, you know, there are some options for the board to consider here, once it comes back.
Gosh.
Yes.
Josh, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Johnny.
Go ahead.
Uh, just a question, who, who's been maintaining this road and plowing it and everything? Has the city been doing it?
Looks like the city has been occasionally, so it looks like this is a situation where occasionally the city has helped out. And, and that's why we're in a little bit of a twilight zone here, right? I, it, it's in everybody's best interest to define who's responsible, um, and, and go from there, because certainly that is very confusing for any new resident that buys the property and it doesn't understand what the status of the road is, and, you know, see the city sometimes being involved, sometimes not. That, that's not a great, uh, picture of clarity for anybody.
Okay, thank you.
Got a question?
Yeah, Joe Cassetti.
Who picks up their garbage?
Stella, can you answer that?
Yeah, if I could just add, we do get garbage service, we get recycling, um, the road is plowed, um, we, um, get mail service. So, you know, again, my parents bought the house here a long time ago, thirty-plus years ago, so everyone was always under the impression it was a city road because it's just generally been treated as a city road. It was paved, um, in the mid nineties. I mean, it is plowed, you know, they, they do a, a good job, um, you know, coming up here. I really appreciate it. It's a difficult road and, you know, for the most part, they, you know, they really, um, you know, treat. you know, for the most part, they, you know, they really um, you know, treat it as it is a city road. So that's why it's just been, you know, confusing for myself and my neighbor, um, just in the sort of gray area where we are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I um, I would just chime in uh, in, in deference to uh, Ms. uh, Jacaruso. And I could sense a, a, a tone of frustration when she originally talked to us, and I can appreciate that. And I would just uh, uh, ask everyone involved in the thing, expedite it wherever we can, because it sounds like we have a, we have an issue that has a salvation and uh, we should do whatever we can to expedite it so that we can give at least one taxpayer some peace, and her neighbor.
Let's take steps.
Definitely is, the, one of the strangest things I've ever seen, seeing it uh, in person. Uh, so, uh, so we had a motion a second. Did we vote on that? I can't even remember at this point. Trish, we did? Okay. All right, um, all right, so um, Stella, um, please pass on the, that's going to uh, Planning and Zoning for an eight twenty-four referral, so we should have more information for you soon.
Okay, great. And it just, um, in terms of my neighbor and I wanna follow up with that. I mean, we can attend that meeting. Is there anyone in particular that we talk to or just sort of attend the meeting and and talk to the, the, I guess it's a board in general?
Well, you, you know, you can, we can certainly talk before then, but um, I'll get in touch with you and I'll share the results of the research. The eight twenty-four is really about whether or not the Planning and Zoning Board would recommend acquiring property. That's all that really is. And so they're gonna take a look into, you know, how it came to be. Hopefully I could explain that to them. And whether or not it makes sense for the city to acquire it. But at the end of the day, it's this board's decision, right? So even though this board prefers acting, it, it'll take a look at their recommendation, positive or negative. But at the end of the day, even a negative recommendation could be overruled by this board, if the board finds it in the best interest of the city. So I think really, you know, I, I think we really have a great understanding of, of the frustration there. And certainly I, I understand what situation you're in. Uh, there needs to be a determination made one way or the other. And it's gotta be based on, you know, some common sense here in terms of how, how, what makes the best sense for both the city and, and the residents on this, on the street. So um, we'll dialogue in terms of what I find in the deeds. If I need any additional information I'm not finding, I, I will definitely reach out to you.
Okay, thanks. And I just, just something to throw in, you know, I don't know, I, you know, you guys talk a lot about grants and stuff like that. Because that is state property there, and you know, people are allowed to recreate. There's hunters. I don't know if that's a possibility to get any funds from the state, if they would contribute, you know, they probably should, but that's another story, so. I don't know, just something else to throw in, but like you said, we'll be in touch and um, and yeah. Thank you. I appreciate everyone looking into it, getting on everybody's radar.
Thank you, and thank you for visiting our meeting. Appreciate it. All right, so we have one more item, I believe, under, yeah, under um, new business fee waiver request from um, the Derby Historical Society.
Okay, I have.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have um, a question on that. Um, how much is the fee that they want us to waive? I mean, there's no number there.
I think Rhonda can answer that, but I don't, I don't.
Is Rhonda on?
I don't, I don't know if she is or not.
Well, that was my question, is that, is there a pending site plan application currently, or is this, is this something that they're trying, that they're looking to do?
There, there is. There is a pending site plan.
Okay.
Um, and you know, I mean, it depends on how you wanna look at this. This Derby Historical Society is in an organ, is a nonprofit that, that essentially, you know, helps Ansonia, as well as Derby, Oxford, Seymour, and missing somebody, Shelton. Um, and so, you know, we're trying, we're trying to help them. They're trying to help them with their renovations.
Absolutely. And I know, I, you know, I, I read, I read the letter. I just wanted to make sure that they weren't coming to us asking, saying, hey, if we do this, will you waive it? I'd much rather react to the site plan actually being, having it been applied for, and then waive the fee, so.
That was my.
If I could inject just a second, I'm.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I was gonna say, Al, the president of the Source Society is on.
We're not mean.
Yes.
But we refer to him for a second. Go ahead.
I, I'd just like to thank you for uh, discussing this, and uh, we do have a site application in. And the uh, fee uh, for the site application was one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. So we have already uh, submitted a check. It's already down City Hall. And it's in possession of the Land Use Authority. Now, if there's any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them for you.
That was all I needed to know.
I'll meet you.
Your pleasure.
Yeah, I mean, I'll make a motion to approve the request.
I'll second it.
Motion, motion by Yamman, second by Rivers. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the full waiver of the um, site plan application fee?
Aye.
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 Uh, any opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion carries unanimously. Make it nice, Al.
Well, thank, thank you very much. We really appreciate that. It's gonna be a long process, and this, this is just the beginning. Uh, but we're very excited about it, and we definitely appreciate the city's helping this effort.
We appreciate the hard work.
Thanks, Duke.
Good luck.
Good luck.
All right, um, old business. Do we have any old business? There was nothing on the agenda, but is there anything?
Um, Mr. President, sorry. Uh, I know it's not on the agenda, and I don't know if it needs to be, but I was just hoping that you guys can call a um, facade loan subcommittee meeting at some point.
Oh, yes. Do you have completed applications?
We have, we have a pending application, which is.
That's kind of a sore spot with the, with the committee.
I know, I know, yeah.
They, they need to be complete, they need to be signed by the owner, there needs to be a diagram of the improvements. But by the time we have the committee meeting, we do have a complete submission um, relative to um, the strip mall adjacent to the Olson Drive property.
Okay, um, remind me who's on that. I know it's myself, Diane, is it Joe, or Tony?
Tony.
Tony, Diana, my. Is that it? Anyone else? I think that was the three of us. Uh, so yeah, we'll, we'll, I'll, I'll schedule a meeting um, to review that application.
We also need that meeting, and I know we discussed it at the top, but for the tax incentive uh, review.
Okay.
For both the Big Y Plaza and the YMCA.
All right. Oh, oh, I, I can't give you a date off the top of my head right now, but I can give you, I can uh, coordinate both of those for you. Uh, any other, any other old business?
Who is on that tax incentive review board?
Some are um, defined by the actual legislation, so Economic Development Director is a part of that. Uh, Planning and Zoning, Chair, I believe, is a part of that. But I think there are some spots for Aldermen, and if we have not already assigned those, then Josh would be responsible for assigning those before the meeting.
Josh, I'd be interested in joining that board if there's availability.
Yeah, yeah, I would be, too.
Too late.
Yeah, there's a few, there's a few of you that, that have been uh, volunteers who've been second to the trough and have gotten hyped out. No, not many names, but.
Why would that not be the Finance Committee?
Oh, yeah.
Maybe.
And that makes sense.
I, I don't understand why we have all these different. Anyway, I just think that.
I think, I think there's specific legislation that defines who's on that. And when we, when we pass that, I think we define specific slots, so I don't think it can just be, you know, just the Finance Committee. Certainly the Finance Committee can attend, but I think there's other membership that needs to be on to.
Included as well.
Yeah, so.
You want on, say now, Diane, before.
Tony, you're on Finance anyway, right?
Right.
Yeah, so.
I'm trying to bring my girl Diane, though.
I'll bring my baby.
Deal.
You bring your son, I'll bring my baby.
He's heavy, but yeah, I'll bring him.
Any other old business? Going once, going twice. All right, we have one item left, which is executive session. We have one item in executive session. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion.
Motion. All right, I'll second it. Tony, again, you beat me up, God.
I'm a moan and second by Rivers.
Go Rivers. Get it together.
Uh, so we're gonna, motion to come out of his. Motion to come out of his.
Executive session on the recording.
Second.
Motion by Mammon, second by Rivers, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we had one item in the, in the issue of potential lease of Ansonia Opera House.
Make a motion.
Go ahead, son.
No joke, go.
No, motion that council proceed as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion by Yamman, second by Mammon to proceed as discussed in executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Right, motion carries unanimously.
Go Rivers.
Last item.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
I finally got that one in, Tony.